Folks on this call, it's our item, so we could get started on that, I guess. Did everyone, do you want to do a round of introductions to folks that are on the call? Or just dig in? Anyone? Counselor Keebler?
Well, maybe we can, who is, who is speaking to us about the sounding board and reporting out on that? And what their roles are?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and start that? I'll go ahead and share my screen. And Counselor Perkins is on the sounding board. She's our counselor liaison along with Barb Campbell. The sounding board is a city manager appointed committee. So it's a little bit different than our regular citizen involvement committees. So Eric pointed the composition of the sounding board, and we'll talk about that. And we're just going to give you an update on our progress so far. And our role is really to look at developing a package of code amendments that will be going to the planning commission and eventually city council to allow different types of shelters, shelter types for our folks in the community that are experiencing houselessness citywide. And we'll talk a little bit about that and the work and the progress we've made so far. So Megan, I'll go ahead and share my screen. And the folks on the call also who are on the sounding board. Let's see, Kathy Austin represents AHAQ. And she's on the call and she's going to talk to you a little bit about the process. We were, we have a few things we'd want to talk to you about that. We're sort of needing a little bit of guidance from council on. Scott Winters is on the sounding board. He's a planning commissioner. And then Hans Jorgensen, Jorgensen is on the call. And he is from the NLA. So we have a full list of everybody on the sounding board. But I think that's all that's here today from them. So I'll go ahead and share and we can go ahead and start. Okay, Megan, you can just tell me when to advance.
All right, sounds good. Um, so yeah, the sounding board was formed in March and met first in April. It was basically formed to address sort of what long term solutions that the city of Ben could be, you know, putting forward to address our, our houseless neighbors. You can see here on the sort of continuum that this group is specifically tasked with the shelter and camp part of the, you know, full city of Ben's response to people experiencing homelessness. The next slide. So this is, uh, who is on the sounding board? You can really see, I want to kind of go over each, each person because you can really see the diversity of this group. One of the things that this, this doesn't show though, is how many city staff aren't mentioned here, who have been doing some amazing work for this group. I, as the counselor, I'm on this group. Barb Campbell is also on this group as a city counselor. We have Scott Winters here as the planning commission representative. We have two representatives from the HLC. And we have an affordable housing representative. We have a BDAB representative, an NLA representative. And then we also have Stacy Witty, who is another service provider. You know, because of, because of this group, we really have robust discussions and a really, really, really large knowledge base. And really work hard to come to consensus with sort of this very dense work of amending code language. And we also have public comment at each meeting. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Suzanne for being such a wonderful leader of this group and putting it together so quickly and working with other staff to produce so much work product for us to review every couple of weeks. Our role is to develop a set of recommendations for the city of Bend, for the city manager to amend the Bend development code to allow varying types of shelter citywide. In other words, sort of how can we take away any barriers to moving forward quickly with a variety of shelter types in order to meet our council goal of providing shelter for 500 of our neighbors in the next two years? We have had five meetings since April, a very aggressive schedule. And we hope to have, sorry, my screen just went, did something funny? We hope to have a package of amendments to the planning commission later this summer. We go to the next slide. Here you can kind of see what the meeting topics have generally consisted of. Basically, all meetings after the first meeting have been very involved and really like into the nitty gritty. Everything from sort of what is the definition of shelter types to zoning, to specific needs for our city, to sort of what each type of shelter must provide. So we are in this sort of June area right now. Thank you for the little circle there, appreciate it. And, oh my gosh, my screen just keeps dying. And we are, you know, going to be moving towards having this to the planning commission very shortly, which is really great. So can we move to the next slide? So this is why we're doing this. Basically, the Bend development codes allow shelters only in temporary use and only in zoning districts. Campgrounds are only allowed in two commercial zoning districts. And, you know, the sounding board's work will really recommend amendments to allow, you know, types of shelter citywide. I'd also like to add that, you know, recent legislation making it easier to site shelters has an expiration date. And so this group is really planning for the future. So there's no delay or reason why we, you know, couldn't continue to move forward with haste in order to create more shelter opportunities. So I think next Suzanne is going to go over sort of the work we've done. And then Kathy Austin is also going to help out with some specifics. And then we're going to come back to those sort of key questions that were on the last slide for this committee. So Suzanne?
Yeah, great, thanks. And I've had a lot of help from Pauline Hardy and in planning and Elizabeth O'Shea from legal. So can't take all the credit for all this stuff, but, and a lot of other folks as well. So one of the things the sounding board has come up with is basically looking at three different types of shelter types or buckets that sort of a whole bunch of different concepts for housing or shelter can fit under. So we've come up with three definitions, basically, with a overall umbrella definition for a shelter. So a shelter means a location for overnight accommodation who lack permanent housing. A shelter may be permanent or temporary and is either, sorry, my box is in front of people or is in front of the text and is either an outdoor shelter, a group shelter, or a multi-room shelter. So a group shelter means a building that contains one or more sleeping areas or is divided by non-permanent partitions furnished with cots, floor mats, bunks for use of the shelter. So that's what you'd think of as Shepherd's House or the new low barrier shelter that we just opened or formerly our, our winter warming shelter, which will hopefully be, you know, on, run on a permanent basis. Now that the low barrier shelter is open. So the multi-room shelter means a building that contains separate sleeping rooms that for use as a shelter. And that is sort of like the Bethlehem Inn. So separate rooms, it can house a variety of families, single people, different types of folks. And but the main thing is that it's separate rooms. And so also project turnkey, which the state has funding for, would fall under, under this bucket, the multi-room shelter. And then outdoor shelter means a site on which multiple mobile or permanent units are placed for use as a shelter. So that would be the Veterans Village. And we've got some examples, Will. Hi, John. Yay, glad you're on. So we've got some examples locally that we'll go through as well. So those are the three primary buckets. And the sounding board has agreed to these definitions just at our last meeting, which was on Wednesday. So it takes a long time to make, make sausage in this virtual environment. So we, I think we have the definitions pretty well solidified. So again, examples. Shepherd's House has 30 beds. Our low barrier shelter has 70. Multi-room shelters, just to give you a sense of size, Bethlehem Inn has 148 with varying room sizes. And then the Redmond project turnkey project is 25 rooms. Other project turnkey examples and examples we're looking at throughout the city are between like 30 and 60. And then the outdoor shelter examples, we've got Veterans Village, which is 15 sites. St. Vincent de Paul's micro village center, which is 10 sites with a community building and a single family residence. And then just in Southern Oregon, there's a nonprofit called Rogue Retreat. And they have been developing with the city of Medford, an urban campground with 120 sites. And I'll show you a picture of that in a sec. But you can see that there's sort of like these varying needs of different people that are experiencing houselessness. And we feel like these three categories kind of captures the needs of most people. And we looked at what other cities have done too, and feel like this is reflective of, of what other cities have, have done as well. And you can see that there's varying sizes, but we really need like a lot of variations citywide to, to accommodate the folks we have in our community. So really our role, just to explain it graphically, is to look at these different shelter types and then figure out which zoning districts these should go in. So this is where the sounding board input is key. Which zoning districts, how large they should be, whether there should be a maximum number of rooms or campsites or beds? And then if, if so, what standards? And Counselor Perkins also referenced House Bill 2006, which will sunset July 1 of 2022. And that's basically a supersiting bill in a way. An emergency shelter has to be approved regardless of land use. If somebody came in tomorrow, that's in effect now with a site and with a management plan and met the criteria in House Bill 2006, they could go ahead and, and move forward and just meet building permits if those were applicable. So the work we're doing will codify it through the land use process beyond that sunset date. One thing we haven't talked about yet with the sounding board, we talked a little bit about it, but the idea of, of private residences, so in single family zones, being able to house somebody like in their driveway and or behind their house or whatever in an RV. So we've got that provision right now in our wildfire RV ordinance. And that, I think that will actually go away when the COVID emergency order goes away at the end of the month. So we should maybe think about that, John. I hadn't really thought about that until now. But, um, but we're looking at allowing those in residential zones. It's kind of another option for folks because a lot of homeless people who are experiencing houselessness might just need a safe place to stay. They're not comfortable going to a shelter. They maybe have a relative who can provide them with a RV or a place to stay for a few months. And it could be something that is really valuable. So just in terms of the outdoor shelter concept, locally, we've got the Veterans Village. So this is developed by the Bend Heroes Foundation and Central Oregon Veterans Outreach. This was their initial site plan, so it actually was scaled back a little bit. But they've got 15 units, parking spaces here. They've got a, about a 2,500 square foot community facility where they'll have laundry. Each individual unit here actually has bathrooms. But a lot of the models we, we are evaluating have the bathroom in the community building. And this is about an acre, acre site, a little over an acre. So you can see just how the footprint and the number of units and everything can kind of fit on the property. And then, oh, this is Veterans Village as well from their website. And these were, this, this is actually St. Vincent de Paul's micro unit development. So you can see there's 10 kind of tiny cabins. They've actually got a single family residence here that'll house a family. And then also a community facility here that will, they have showers and restrooms and things like that in there. So they're, they're got sort of like three different models on, or two different models, basically, on this site. And this is a fairly small site. I think it's a third of an acre. So they're making a lot of use of their property here. And both of these applications were approved through a supersiting process. The legislature offered, I think a year and a half ago, which is called 4212, House Bill 4212, Lynn McConnell managed these approvals. And it was a supersiting bill. And so these came in kind of under a fast track allowance. But what our outdoor shelter sort of bucket of housing types would allow, these would be allowed in the city and in different zoning districts. And so that's what the sounding board is really working on. The shelter, this is just an example from a placing in California. These are called pallet shelters. They're kind of popping up everywhere. It's totally run by solar. It's a really amazing project. It's for women and children. And then this is, this photo is of the Rogue Retreat in Medford, the urban campground. So they've got 120 sites like this. And I think they're looking at funding to get some of the pallet shelters for some of these. Let's see, so group shelters. As I mentioned before, Shepherd's House and then the low barrier shelter are examples of those. And then locally Bethlehem Inn. The project turnkey, this is the motel in Redmond that will be converted. And we can also have, you know, smaller, less kind of institutional or, you know, more, more, oops, home type, type developments that would match this individual room shelter. We have residential care facilities kind of tucked away throughout town. You wouldn't know that they are a residential care facility, but they are in there. So we want to make sure we are looking at these smaller options that might fit into different residential districts as well. So the sounding board, we've been working on this code language. And all of the shelters must provide some sort of onsite or on-call management, restrooms, trash receptacles. If you're going to have a waiting intake area, that it be large enough to accommodate the anticipated number of clients. And then co-locations. So you could have kind of like the St. Vincent de Paul model. They've got the single family residence that would probably qualify under that multi-room shelter. But they've also got the tiny, tiny homes that would qualify under a outdoor shelter. So we want to make sure that co-location of different shelter types is allowed if the site is large enough to accommodate that. And then any shelter needs to meet all building codes, fire codes, things like that. So shelters may provide meals and dining, clothing and laundry facility, showers, daycare facilities, case, case management services and referral services, overnight and daytime accommodations. The low barrier shelter, you know, it's only for overnight. So some shelters may want to provide shelter during the day for folks. So we don't want to limit what they can do, but we wanted to list out some things that may be included. So, um, so adjoining neighbors are aware that these things are allowable. They might have a need for pets, spaces for pets, things like that. And then overnight camping is provided through our safe parking programs, which you all approved a few weeks ago, I think, or a month ago. And then other facilities to support the shelter use. So coming back, now that we've kind of given you an overview of what type of shelters we're looking at, we wanted to come back to this process about notification and type of processing, type of, type of process to use when reviewing these types of shelters. So I'm going to go back and Kathy, if you want to, you want to talk about this?
Sure, I was thinking it might be helpful if some of the newer counselors aren't familiar between the type one and type two. If Pauline wanted to just briefly describe that and then I can talk about our discussions about that. Would that be okay?
Yeah, that would be great. Pauline, I can't see you. Are you able to?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, good, okay.
So the, um, the main differences, I think, between a type one and a type two is the notification process. So for a type one, there is no notification process. And a type two, there is a notification process to the neighbors of the proposed project. Another difference between a type one and type two is that a type one is there is no discretion allowed in that decision. So whatever standards that get adopted, they have to be very clear and objective. Whereas a type two decision does allow some discretionary in the decision.
Right, and so in our group, we've had people who feel strongly it should be type one. And we have people who feel strongly it should be type two. And I think I'm speaking because I can see both sides and wanted to kind of explain why we're not all in agreement just yet. And as Hans wanted me to ma- mention, with the type two, there is a notification of the neighbors. And it goes through a more typical process, but it also can be appealed. Type one is favored by the folks that have done the Veterans Village. That's kind of, that's what they did and it was very quick. And it's certain, this is what you're going to do. It gets approved and you move forward. So I think there would be a shorter timeframe for type one, but it isn't very flexible. There's no ability for staff to look at it sort of a creative approach, that it has to be very clear and boom, this is, this is what we're doing and this is it. And the type two, you have the flexibility to do some, something more creative. But at the same time, you are notifying neighbors. And my concern is that neighbors might feel that they have the ability to stop it or make changes when in fact, there really isn't that much flexibility. And so we don't want to give people a sense that they're going to be empowered to do something and then get frustrated when they can't. And so I can see that on the one hand, the type two would be more creative or have the option to be more creative. But it also has the ability to have been, to be, to upset neighbors and to be appealed. Whereas type one might not allow the creativity, but it's shorter and more definite. The only appeal can be from the applicant. So those are the two sides that we're looking at. And we were hoping that we might get some feedback from the counselors here if they have specific thoughts on that that could help us get closer to a recommendation from our group. Did I say that enough, Suzanne? Did I miss anything?
I think that was great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want us to just discuss now?
Oh, I think it would be helpful.
I didn't know if there was anything else that needed to be presented. Has, this just popped in my head when you were talking. Has any thought been given to, and I want to preface this by saying I'm not in favor of complicating the code because I want it to be easy to understand and to use. But is there any thought on some types of shelter might be better to do type two and some might be better to do type one, depending on how potentially impactful they might be in a neighborhood? Maybe depending on size? Is that something we could think about? Or should we, or would it be better? I think it probably would be better to just pick a type. But I could see maybe like this type of shelter is, is less impactful. And really, we want to just get it done in a clear and objective way. This type of shelter is bigger, more complicated. Maybe they want, like Kathy, you said, a little flexibility to move around. And also maybe it's more important for the neighborhood to have notice of that. So that's just kind of what came into my head when you were, when you were talking.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to check in with Pauline on that and how staff would accept it. Perhaps the applicant could choose one or the other also if they felt like they really needed some flexibility. I honestly, Pauline is going to be the one that's going to answer that. But I like the, the discussion on that. We have not really talked about that specifically.
Well, we're still trying, diving into the three different types of shelters and the different zones that they'll be allowed in. So right at this last meeting, we were focused primarily on the outdoor shelters and whether or not that should be a type one or type two. And maybe in residential districts, maybe it's a type two. But in the commercial and the mixed use districts, maybe it's a type one. Those are the questions I think that we need help answering. And then as we get into the other types of shelters, maybe they're type one primarily. But I think the outdoor shelter was really the one that we were focusing on.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, and I think also too, while we're discussing it, I think there was a general consensus that a type one was maybe the ultimate goal. But as we were trying to come up with how, what are the maximum units or maximum beds in certain areas? And then how we calculate, do we do it by, like with the outdoor shelter? Do we do it by square footage of the property? Does it have amenities on it? And, and the type two, the appeal of that is because, you know, we feel like we haven't quite solidified a lot of these development code. Kind of the specific specifics of it. And so having it as type two definitely gives it a flexibility so that someone could come in and kind of do, you know, the intent of what we're, what we're trying to allow. But I think it seemed like type one, it was kind of the easiest, clearest cut. But we just, we don't want it to be a type one if we're not sure we hit the numbers right. And so that it's kind of a, maybe it's, maybe it starts out as type two or maybe some of the types of shelters in certain zones, we feel comfortable enough to make it a type one. I do like that flexibility a little bit of maybe splitting it up. But as we continue on and have more meetings and then get feedback from the public and especially with people who have managed these sites, they're really helpful in kind of understanding a little bit more nuance, the nuances of it.
We might point out too, the only other small consideration is that type two may have a little bit more expense or a cost associated to it than type one. Not significant enough necessarily to sway the decision, but we should mention that as, as a consideration we discussed.
Yeah, and I asked Lynn if our affordable housing advisory committee could help offset some additional costs. And the answer was yes, of course, it always depends on how many funds we have. But, um, so you're right, Hans, that did come up. But I think we could probably handle that aspect of it. And we were going to talk next, I think, Suzanne, on how we figure out how many go in each zone. So maybe after we have that conversation, your counselors, you might have additional input on this discussion, so.
Yeah, and, oh, go, someone have something?
Sorry, Suzanne, I just wanted to add, one, just make sure and see if Counselor Schenkerberg wants to weigh in here before we move to the next thing. And two, that I very much agree with the concern about creating a notice and comment period, but not explaining to people what it is they can and can't affect. Because I think it is misleading or unfortunate for people to believe I can block this in my neighborhood when that is not what they can do. So I just, throughout the process and when we're, when you guys are doing, getting your public input, being very clear about, you know, that I think is super important and, and weighs on the decision of, you know, how much notice to provide. Because just providing it, I think in itself implies to people, you can block this, which is not what we're trying to achieve here.
So there was some discussion from, from Veterans Village, how they did outreach. It wasn't a public hearing notification, but there was outreach to let neighbors know what's happening. And it, you know, it could be that there's a requirement for notification in that regard. I don't know if it should be mandated or recommended. But, you know, if we do decide to do type one where there isn't a formal notification, perhaps there could be some outreach in another way. So anyway.
Just kind of playing on that for our short-term rentals requirements. I think we require a good neighbor agreement, right? Something like that?
Yes, so we require the, the host to post good neighbor guidelines for, for tenants to abide by. And then there's also a requirement for notification to neighbors with a phone number so that if, you know, the seventh bachelor party of the month shows up next door, they can call someone versus having to go over and trying to talk to a bunch of folks who might not be in the best state of mind to help make some, some objective decisions. So there's, there's always that possibility of providing that information to the area of where folks would be concerned and they'd have an ability to speak with a manager type that could help address whatever issue.
Yeah, and our group was very insistent, there needed to either be onsite management 24 hours or on-call. And so that information could be either posted on the site or given in that kind of an outreach. But the intent was if there's a problem, there needs to be a number you can call immediately or someone you can, whose door you can knock on. So, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, I think like the, my input as Melanie kind of was suggesting is that, that we kind of break down the barriers of kind of what the intention and impact of noticing people is. Like if we're just telling them it's going to happen, then I think that we have to be really transparent on like, we're informing you. And like, I mean, it's just kind of part of- And like, I mean, it's just kind of part of that local government aspect of like, you're telling people and like, maybe they all have an option for appeal and maybe they won't. And how do we make sure that's transparent? And really explaining the difference and why we're choosing like one type of notification versus the other. And how do we kind of create the energy or the outreach to make sure that the neighbors truly understand what that means? Especially like the humans surrounding that are like, I don't feel like I have a voice. And they're like, oh, well, you had this opportunity. But in that opportunity, and I, I think we've talked about this in a bunch of our meetings and a bunch of the onboarding is like, everyone feels like there's an opportunity until there's like bulldozers on the ground. But what we actually know is that like the decisions made like three months before, there's even like equipment there. And so how do we kind of create that bridge and like, what will that bridge look like? And how do we make sure that bridge is like su- as clear as it can be with how complicated like land uses?
Yeah, it sounds like the issue is going to be more in residential zones than it would be in commercial or light industrial. And so, you know, that might be, you know, where it's going or the type of land it's on might dictate. You know, I, it, it's great to get this feedback and ideas and something that our, our group can continue to discuss. Mary came on, she probably has something legal to say.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I know Elizabeth's been the main lawyer and apologies if you guys already talked about this. But just a question, the way the short-term rentals and actually our marijuana facilities works is how we have access to neighbors. And the good neighbor policy is that they also have an operating license. It isn't our land use code, it's our regular code. And they have to apply annually for an operating license. So I was deeply involved in the code drafting and two, one code did not go to the planning commission. One code only went to council because it was our Bend municipal code. So I guess my question was, is there any discussion of needing some kind of operating license? Just your mechanism for requiring operators to do things like have a number or notify neighbors? That isn't something that we normally do in the land use process. So it, I'm just putting it out there as something to think about, like, and it's an additional hoop. And it's like, you know, they have to pay for a license. And then you have criteria in your, the municipal code. So it's just something to keep in your mind. That's how we've done it. Every other business or, or land use that operates in Bend doesn't have to do that. It's only short-term rentals and marijuana facilities that have a separate operating license because of the unique nature of those uses that we continue to regulate outside of once they have their land use permit. And in this case, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to lessen the requirements of the land use area. So do you want to add requirements in the operation? And how do you do that? It's through your municipal code.
Is there a requirement under the emergency shelter siding to have an operator's license for, as it is right now?
Under the safe parking program or?
What the Veterans Village is being created under?
It's like a permit application they fill out, but there's not an ongoing license requirement.
Hi, this is Elizabeth. As part of their application, there is a requirement to demonstrate management, I think pursuant to best practices. But there isn't an ongoing licensing requirement. And this is part of what we talked about at the meeting of what are standards that are about the land use? And what are standards about ongoing operation? And so this is a distinction we have been talking about as a group is what are the attributes of the site to regulate through the development code? And what are attributes of ongoing management that are more operational and management decisions? And so we've talked about that a little bit and this is part of that discussion of what are the right standards to put in the code.
Yeah, we like it creative if we don't want it to be regulatory through the Bend municipal code to have some sort of implementing administrative regulations under like the city manager's authority.
Well, Mary wouldn't, wouldn't they be subject to like our, our code generally about buildings? About, you know, getting the snow off your sidewalk, not letting trash accumulate. I mean, they'd be su- subject to all that code anyway, right?
It's, it's more things like good neighbor, like again, once a business starts operating, we just have normal code enforcement. But we don't generally tell a business how to operate once it's up and running unless they're like rising to the level of a nuisance or a noise violation. Short-term rentals is a definite exception. We are, we require an annual license and there are a lot of regulations that go along with being a good neighbor. As John said, we, we can yank their license if they're not. But I don't, a- and neighbors can complain and they do. So that's something you definitely want to think about. Do you want to create a system where neighbors can complain?
So, and Counselor Campbell joined us.
Hello.
Hello, this conversation started out with trying to solicit feedback on how we want to review shelters. So is it a type one? Is it a type two? There, there seemed to be some interest in seeing perhaps type one in commercial and industrial areas. And perhaps having a type two in, in residential areas is kind of what, what I took away from it. There's also some concern about setting the expectation when we send a notice that people can veto it. I think people need to realize that land use notification is not your right to veto. And so how, how do we, how do we better explain that to folks? So that there might be some components of the, of the application that you can comment and influence on. But for the most part, if you're proposing something that meets the standards, there, there, there's not a whole lot to debate. Because it's, as we all know, land use isn't a popularity contest. We, we have standard and specifications to, to, to prevent that. So with that said, Counselor Campbell, I don't know if you have any thoughts in terms of the review process in various zoning districts?
Um, I do. I am one, I think it's just personality types, honestly. And we can just choose one way or the other. I am of the type that if I get notification, but there's nothing I can do about it, I would just as soon not even get that notification. But I realize very well that, that's just not all people. Some people would rather know about it. I think that a good neighbor agreement is an excellent compromise between those two things. Walking around to the neighbors and speaking to them and handing them a piece of paper. I happen to live next door to a facility for folks with severe mental illness. It used to be a private home when we bought our house that we were next to a private home. And now we're next to a facility. And it has been years and years of hammering out good neighbor agreements. But it has been worth it. The problems that we see are along the lines of people sitting on the curb in front of my house or in front of somebody's house and smoking. And in particular, leaving their cigarette butts or their seven eleven cup behind on our property. It's just, it's not illegal to sit on the curb and smoke. The curb is public property. I understand that very well. But just as a point of courtesy on our agreement is keep moving. If you're going for a smoke break and you, you know, please just take a walk. Don't choose one house to hang out there for a half an hour. Somebody had, one of my neighbors just freaked out. That person, I gather, was just kind of standing in the road staring what she felt like was in her window at her. And so that is what we have in ours, are things like that. And then the other thing we have is they should have an ashtray on their front porch. And these folks should bring their butts back with them and dispose of them properly. Don't just leave them in the street or in our yards. So all of those things, there's no law in the world that we could, you know, use to enforce any of those things. And that is exactly why they're in good neighbor agreements. And I really do believe that there is just so much, honestly, NIMBY backlash to projects like this. I feel like if we can take away these relatively minor problems, disagreements with the neighbors, then that just puts us that much further ahead. If we can get a good neighbor agreement that says, you know, again, things like that, how are they acting in the neighborhood? So there you go. And yes, I think we can look at our short-term rental code to figure out what does that look like? How does it read? Short-term rentals also require a 24-hour phone number. That's one of the things we have. We know who to call in the middle of the night if we don't want to call the police. So that is what I think. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So Suzanne, are you looking for additional feedback?
I think in general, well, I just wanted to say too, that in the safe parking program, oh, Counselor Schenkelberg. We, we do have in the, I see your hand raised. In the safe parking program, we require a neighborhood meeting or a outreach so we could take that code language. And then there was one more thing I wanted a little bit of guidance on, but go ahead, Counselor Schenkelberg.
I know this isn't around land use, but I think just continuing to uplift, like how do we have a conversation about like shelters in neighborhoods and breaking down those systemic barriers and having real conversations about like taking care of neighbors? Like we have been receiving a lot of feedback from the community of wanting to like support houseless humans. And this is like a huge step in doing that. And that part of like the notification, whether it's a notification in which they can like give public comment on or not. Having that conversation, I was like, this is what we're doing. Like this is, this is part of systemic change. Like we want humans to have a safe place to be and this is part of this. You are contributing to making this like town safer for all people that live here. And we're really grateful for that and having that as also part of the notification. And it's like, you know, it's a PR thing citywide, but also when we're having conversation with those neighbors, really talking to them. Because it's like we have a finite amount of land and like, we need to, we need to be utilizing it and bringing people together instead of creating more division. And I just, it makes me really excited to think of that, like bringing communities together within the neighborhoods. And like, this is what we're doing. We're supporting everyone that lives here in Bend. Like the council has been really clear on that and everyone has been really consistent on it. And I feel, and I know, only speaking for Counselor Perkins, because her and I have talked about it, like we feel very fiery about this. We need to support the humans that live here and that is why we're making this decision. And there are a lot of other people on this call and a lot of other, in the sounding boards, the service providers. And that's why we are having these conversations and they're so important. And that is like, hoping that somehow we can also convey that as we're having the land use development conversations and as we're going into residential zones. And maybe them going together so that like the information is all there, like informational and the land use information. So that it's not just like multiple flyers coming to them and being like, ah, the city is sending us another piece of paper. And having them translated and all of those pieces that are just so important to break down the systemic barriers.
Um, Rita, I will just do a friendly reminder. Because there are three counselors in this meeting, we cannot discuss, bring into this meeting the opinions, thoughts of another counselor. That is the road to breaking the quorum rule. Do you know what I mean?
We, we noticed this, didn't we?
Oh, is this, yeah, but we still can't have, can we have? Maybe I'm just flat out wrong if it's a public meeting.
I think we're okay, Barb.
Great, thank you.
Melanie is hands up. I know that Susannah wants to get some feedback on some other items and we still need to get the parking. So just.
Yeah, I just, I just want to give, just, just to make sure it's really clear. If I had to pick one, I would pick type one. But maybe we can look at where we might need to either give the option or ask for type two, as long as we're clear about what that means for people when they get that notice. And then I had one other thing, but I forgot it. So that's it for me. But I just want to be clear, oh, I, I'm not in favor of an operational license. I think we can, we can, we can achieve that goal in a different way. It's not so worse, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'll be pretty quick. So one thing we're sort of grappling with is the number of site, campsites or units we could get on a parcel. And if we should have in the lower density residential zoning districts, some kind of maximum amount specifically for the outdoor shelters really, because they're outside, they're not covered in a shell. They're probably going to be a little bit tougher to manage and a little more impactful potentially on the neighbors, you know. I don't know. Anyhow, but one thing we started out, when we looked at other cities, Eugene, Medford, they've got Salem. They've got limits in their residential zone for like 15 sites. But then we started looking at if you have a, a larger site, like the Veterans Village site, like an acre. And we honestly, our land is so expensive in the RL zoning districts and the RS zoning districts. We're likely not going to have that much demand for these or, or that many opportunities there. But if somebody has a large parcel of land, should we be looking at more like a proportion per square footage of, square foot of the land? And so, you know, Veterans Village, St. Vincent de Paul, and actually Dawn's House, one of our safe parking projects is all about 400 square feet per, like pad, so per site. But if you had an acre, that would be potentially 40, 43 plots. And a, you know, we don't have a lot of acre sites in the city. But even, even if you had a third of an acre, which is a lot of our, our older RL lots, that's still a substantial amount of, of potential sites. So we don't need to figure out a, a number, but it would be great to get your input, sort of just like your feeling about, should we put a maximum on those lower density zoning districts, like 15, 20? You know, we can always work with somebody that comes in with 21 sites as opposed to 20. Maybe they would go through a type two process instead of a type one or something like that. But just wanted to get your feedback on that and really quick, because I know you have to get to parking.
And I just said something really quick, Suzanne, it was part of the conversation and it came up from Veterans Village versus St. Vincent de Paul, is that maybe taking the community building square footage out. And because some, some lots may have adjacent property, like St. Vincent de Paul has an adjacent space to. So the numbers wound up being denser in their lot. Then if you look at Veterans Village, it has that whole community building in it. So there was not one simple formula that fit and we just, you know, had this conversation. And I'm sure we'll continue to have the conversation, but I was one that was pushing, it should be proportional to the size of the land as opposed to a specific number so that it's more realistic for whatever. If it's a small parcel, a large parcel, a little, it'll grow or, or shrink depending on the size of the parcel. So I just wanted to add that little bit in. Sorry.
It's good.
Yeah, my, my input would be that sounds like a better way to go to me. I, I just don't know how to figure that out. And so you could talk to service providers. Because the other thing too is that, you know, just people, people like to think of the worst-case scenario. And they think, oh, there's an empty lot next to me. It's going to be filled with campers, you know. And, and service providers are going to be managing these camps. They are going to have limits on how many people they can manage, what their resources are and what is actually going to be effective and good for the people living there. So there are other bounds that are going to be around how many camps are on a site. But to me, it makes sense to look at the size of the site and then kind of determine from there how many people fit realistically and fit in with the zoning of the neighborhood that's already there.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I agree with Melanie, just like we're, I think, really talking to the service providers about like what, how they kind of see the acreage and kind of what it will look like when they have like, whether their buildings or tents or whatever kind of structures will be on that land and what's realistic for them and how they want to structure it. Like is there going to be a community space also within that acre? What will, yeah, like how many service providers will need to be there? So like kind of how, depending on how many campers are there, which means how much street parking is there allowed? Like I think there's a lot of pieces to really talk to those service providers on like, what could break down the barriers for them to provide the best service for them, for the houseless humans?
Yeah. Okay, great. I think Kathy. I think Kathy, Hans, Scott, Megan, anything else?
Councillor Campbell, any, any thoughts on that one?
Um, I think, I'm afraid that gets us back to a type two permit. Is when somebody can come in and say, this is what the lot looks like, and we're going to put a little community building. And. What Affordable Housing had talked about was, yeah, just averaging. How much space is needed for parking in a community building into the total? So that we ended up with, what was it Kathy? It was like four hundred square foot per unit. Even though the units might be as small as a hundred and fifty square feet. So for, right? So to stay with a type one, maybe there are just two equations. This is the equation if you have a community building, this is the equation if you don't. And that equation is still clear and objective enough for a type one. Maybe.
I want to explain that to me. I don't understand why, why has.
What I, well, and so I'll tell you what I think it is, and then that'll be how I'll find out if I'm right or not. Is, yeah, my understanding was type one is much more rigid. As far as the requirements go, but then because of that. There are not opportunities for it to be challenged. Versus the type two is more open to working with folks. On just what it is that their own project is going to look like. And was I even close to correct, Susanna?
I'm deferring to Colin.
Oh, okay.
I see him pop up.
Yeah, so. The real test for what can be processed as a type one application versus a type two application is the application of discretion by the decision maker. So if we're going to process these as planning applications, if there's any discretion that's applied with any of the standard criteria that we use. Then we really need to do it as a type two application. And that doesn't necessarily, you know, tell people that they can veto it. I was listening to that part of the conversation. But it does, what it does do is even if you're applying just a small amount of discretion and there's. Lots of Luba cases on what's discretion and what's not. So it's, it's not a very. Clear term, which is somewhat ironic, but, but, but if discretion is applied. The, the, it's, it's, it puts the, the application into jeopardy. Because what could happen is that any neighbor who, who feels as though they should have gotten noticed and should have gotten an opportunity to comment and didn't. Will have an opportunity to, in the future, it could be down the road. You know, a year or two down the road, they find out about it. They say, I should have been noticed. They appeal to Luba. And Luba basically invalidates the application and tells the city we have to go back. So as we're crafting these code standards, I'll be working with the city attorney's office when we look at the, what the regulations are. And just kind of do a risk assessment on what's the best and we'll kind of continue this discussion as we move forward. With the understanding that I think that the council's goal is to keep it as a type one. But it's, it's really dependent upon what those regulations are.
You done? And then Hans, you have a comment, your question? And you're unmuted.
Apologies. I, I'm thinking that if it's type two that requires a public meeting, my assumption is it would. That notwithstanding if it meets code, there's really nothing to challenge. Sometimes those public meetings create a dialogue by and between developers. And occasionally a developer will acknowledge or make a small concession to get community support. So I just wonder if that's an opportunity to get more community support, understanding that we would need to be clear to people. That if this meets code, there's nothing that the developer of the site needs to change. That it might promote some dialogue and maybe some community support would be my thought. In terms of maybe there's a reason to want to type two, particularly in residential, that's where I see the likelihood for the biggest pushback frankly.
And Colin, correct me if I'm wrong, but they won't necessarily require a public meeting. When we're talking about public meetings, Hans, I think you're talking about the neighborhood public meeting. Certain applications trigger that, and if it's a new development for site plan review. Colin, does it have to have a structure of 10,000 square feet or greater to trigger a, a neighborhood public meeting?
Yes, so for land divisions, new buildings, 10,000 square feet or larger condition of use permits, zone changes, and a few other ones. So as it's written, if they were moving into an existing building, then it would not trigger, even if it was a type two, it wouldn't trigger a neighborhood public meeting. But if the, the council and the committee want it to, you know, all of these to have a neighborhood public meeting. We could just add that to the list of, of application types that have to have the neighborhood public meeting.
Um, yeah, I was going to say, I, I like the idea of having a neighborhood public meeting for residential properties. Their developments are residential and then abutting residential. And not necessarily to try and give an opportunity for the, for the neighbors to push back on it or anything. But I think just for education of the neighbors and to introduce the, you know, the, the service providers to the neighbors. So that, you know, and, and in Barb's case, having that communication, opening that line of communication and starting that out. And really just educating the community that's going to be living next to this, like, hey, this is the process, this is what we do. And, and maybe, you know, maybe kind of. Alleviating a little bit of fears or questions that they might have, because if they just hear about it. Oh, did you hear there's this homeless camp going in down the street? Having the service provider introduce themselves and creating a forum for that neighborhood feedback, I think, I think is a, a good thing. And it's part of the education process.
And if not required, Scott, certainly it's part of what anyone would do as best practices. I think the outreach. Ahead of Veterans Village was very well received by the Boyd Acres NA. Because it wasn't, wasn't a surprise, they were part of the dialogue. It was just really a positive way to approach it. So if not, if not mandated or regulated, at least part of a best practices approach.
So I just, I, I know we're getting close to time and I'm, but I think this is a really good discussion. And I want to say I agree with what Scott said about the, the potential value of those meetings. I just want to make a point that what I'm hoping this, this code will eventually do is allow. More shelter types in more areas across the city from small to large. And that a small service provider could maybe step up and buy a house, right? And, and start providing homes for our house's neighbors there. And that I just want to be wary of us asking service providers who have already been under invested in, who already have a hard time just doing the service. To also kind of become PR and know how to run a neighborhood public meeting and know how to get neighbors on board. Just to contrast, like a, a large developer, a Polish or somebody, they pay people to do that exclusively, right? So, so just to keep that in mind that when we're asking them to kind of enter into this developer world and, and become sort of PR people for themselves. Plus providing all the service, that we just need to be mindful of that, of what we're asking people to do. And think of, is there any way for us to support that? Is there, is there city resources or other ways that we could support those neighborhood meetings? If we're going to ask for them, could city staff or somebody be there that works on, works on this issue to help everybody understand the bigger picture of what's going on? Plus what's happening here with this shelter, just something to think about as we're talking about those meetings.
Could I ask the one question on notification? I know it used to be that only homeowners were mailed notification. And then there was some discussion, particularly in the southeast elbow of notifying renters. And I was wondering if we're talking about notifying the people that live around this, it's chances are there'll be a significant number of renters. Is that notification going to the physical addresses or just the owners now?
So under the current code Kathy, it's to the, the address or the physical owners. And then with the House Bill 2001 amendments, we are proposing that the tenants get noticed as well with any mailing.
Does that include neighborhood association meetings? Do you happen to know, Pauline?
With all the notifications that I do, all neighborhood associations, the recognized ones get a notice as well.
Great, thank you.
But to be clear, it goes to the land use chair, doesn't go to the whole neighborhood association.
Good discussion. Suzanne, Pauline, do you have the, the feedback that you're looking for to keep this moving?
I think so. It's a very iterative process, so we'll be back.
And, and your next sounding board meeting is?
Oh, yeah, July fourteenth, so we're taking a whole month. And we'll be focusing back on the code amendments and then we're going to be doing kind of a, a web based storyboard. Survey type of thing that will be rolling out. Or at least it'll be in draft form by July fourteenth, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we will transition to parking. Megan, were you looking to say something?
I was going to say, thanks so much for your input, everybody.
Thanks for all the work that this board is doing. Really, really thank you for giving your time.
It's impressive.
And withstanding all of the public comment.
So with that, we will shift gears and have a follow up conversation on parking. There was the, the work session we have with council, well, about a month, month and a half ago regarding removing the parking minimums throughout the city. I'm joined by a number of folks who can help provide a little bit of background or color commentary is necessary. We have Allison Platt. Russ Grayson, Colin Stevens. Pauline, I'm not so sure if you're going to stick around for this, or you're going to stick around, Pauline Hardy. Toby Marks and Ryan Rankin. So I'm going to share my screen and have a just brief presentation. Just to kind of summarize what we discussed in the past and what we're looking for is. Really feedback from the, from the subcommittee in terms of, do we want to continue to consider making adjustments to parking regulations? Primarily in light of the variety of other projects that we have with our, our, our goals. And I've got a list of other items, but it's essentially, it's a resource conversation. And if we want to pursue it, what are we going to do? To make adjustments so that we can, we can accomplish all the ambitious goals that we have, that council has put together. So with that, let me see if I can figure out how to share my screen. And. Going back and forth, let's see, do you see kind of the, do you see the draft presentation or do you see the presentation presentation?
You need to start the presentation.
Yep, okay, hold on. Sorry about that. See. Presentation mode. You're still not seeing presentation mode? Oh, okay. Who's got, who's got a clue for me here?
Did you hit from beginning and it didn't go?
If you press that, you already have the button at the bottom of your scheme, of your screen.
Slideshow, right?
Like the wine glass looking thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one. Is one of your screens showing in full presentation mode?
One more time, sorry folks. It's been a technically, technically challenging day all around from three o'clock on. Hey, did that work?
Now we can see.
Now you have to go to display settings. Yeah, there you go.
Any interest of time, if you can, if you can deal with, with what it's telling me is we should be seeing presentation mode, but I'm going to, I'm going to continue.
You just had it there, John.
Uh, here we are, you're at eleven, let's, let's continue the conversation on parking regulations. And so as we move through this, what we want to do is make sure that we, we understand the objectives for the parking reduction conversation. We'll talk through some of the recent parking code changes that we've done through the BCD. We're doing some of the House Bill 2001. Toby will summarize a, some of the parking management that we're doing throughout town. Circle back with the staff recommendation and then we'll, we'll figure out exactly where we want to go. So it is, as I gather it from, from the conversations that we've had to date, there seems to kind of be two objectives for, for reduction in parking. And so is it, if one was to create additional space for housing. And I think with our, our core area adjustments. You can see where we have made additional changes to parking standards where additional space can be constructed on a site. There's also conversations about encouraging more bike and pedestrian facilities. And so this is a picture from Eugene with their, their separated bike lanes there. And so there, there's definitely. Opportunity to do both with, with in terms of how we manage our parking and our, and our parking standards. But before we jump into specifically how, what staff would be recommending, I wanted to just have a little brief background in terms of what we've already been doing. Today. So with that. Allison, if you're on here, we, we've made some specific changes for the Bend Central District. And Allison, if you're here, if you could briefly just run through how this, this diagram shows that there's additional space where you can build. For housing based on the reduced parking that we have in the BCD.
Yeah, so in February, we adopted a new code for the Bend Central District, which essentially makes it the area of town.
Oh, maybe she's not on here anymore, so I will take it from here.
No, we, John, we can hear.
If you want to tee off on that.
John.
John.
I see you, Ally. I can't hear you.
I'm talking. I think everyone else can hear me.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, I'll keep talking.
This is awesome. Ally, take it away.
Okay. So we made, we made changes to the Bend Central District code, which essentially made it the, the zone in the city. Or the area in the city with the most flexible parking standards. And so we did a lot of things to do that. Kind of one of the biggest ones related to commercial or non-residential uses is we simplified it to just. Every non-residential use provides one space per 500 square feet of their, of their building use. So one parking space per 500 square feet. We reduce the residential parking minimums. And then we, the biggest change was we gave every, every property. A 10,000 square foot of building footprint exemption. So that, but that image on the bottom right shows for every 10,000 square feet of building. On every story can be exempt from parking. So if you're doing a 10,000 square foot building footprint, that's five stories tall. You still don't provide, you're not required to provide any parking. So it's a really significant parking section for this area in particular. We've still haven't seen development, especially residential development come in really under this code. And so, you know, there's, I think we still kind of need to see the, you see what this code does unlock. I know a lot of people are, are running pro formas, kind of coming up with, with projects in this area. But we haven't seen a lot really come into the, into the planning application unless Pauline has kind of updates. We've seen more kind of commercial or office uses coming in, but so far to date, no essential yet.
Maybe, maybe I could add on just a little bit when Allison says we, that wasn't just a staff analysis. So we had, you know, an external advisory committee, we had consultant assistance facilitation. And there was actually quite a bit of, it wasn't quite a full blown parking study that you would see like the citywide parking study. But there were attempts to look at the supply of on-street parking, kind of the existing utilization. On certain blocks and then quite a bit of, quite a bit of conversation with the advisory committee at the time in that process. And then that moved into the code, you know, kind of code drafts, code revisions. So it, it was a, it was a fairly detailed and lengthy discussion on this one slide that you're seeing.
And we had a kind of a joint work session with the NLA, AHAQ. Our Urban and Old Advisory Board Committee members. I want to say there was even one more advisory committee, maybe VDAW was represented at that, that all kind of weighed in on a discussion. That ultimately led to the adoption of this, of this code. That kind of helps her context.
Thank you, Ally. Thank you, Brian. I apologize. This is why you don't have meetings at three o'clock on Friday, three o'clock on a Friday. About all the technical difficulties. So we will move on to House Bill 2001. And summarize some of the changes that we are seeing. As part of House Bill 2001. So Colin, I, I think you were going to summarize it quickly or Pauline, if you want to walk through it. But we've definitely made some adjustments. But we've definitely made some adjustments that accompany that bill. But I think Planning Commission has a work session on it.
I can do it, Colin.
Okay.
Okay.
You're closer to it than I am.
So yes, we have a Planning Commission work session on Monday at 5:30 to go over the entire draft for House Bill two thousand and one amendments, which includes parking. The draft does include some changes for the parking requirements for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. Today in the code, you can see in the middle column, the current standards for duplexes and triplexes. And the proposed standards for duplexes and triplexes would eliminate parking requirements. Not to say that they can't put in parking, they can. It's just saying that there's no minimum parking requirements proposed for duplexes and triplexes. For a quadplex, the parking requirements, again, you can see the current standards in the middle column. And what is being proposed is in compliance with, I believe, the model code. And it is requiring one off-street parking space per development. So it's not per unit, it's just for the entire development. And that's in the standard medium and high-density residential zones. And then in our low-density residential zones for quadplexes, which is four units, it would be two, a minimum of two off-street parking spaces per development. Townhomes, today we require two parking spaces per unit. And in compliance with, I want to say it is the OARs, Oregon Administrative Rules and the Model Code. It is proposing one parking space per unit. And we don't have cottage clusters in our code today. We have something similar called cottage housing developments. And what is being proposed is one space per unit. We also met with some representatives of affordable housing developments. And the code today requires one space per unit. And I understand this doesn't have to do with House Bill two thousand and one, but we thought it was timely since we're amending parking requirements. And so the current standard today for affordable housing is one space per unit. And after talking to representatives of affordable housing developments, they felt it was okay to reduce it to half a space per unit for senior housing and special populations.
Thank you, Pauline. And if there are any questions on there, we can answer them now. If not, Toby, I was just going to see if you wanted to just briefly overview some of the, the parking management changes we've made in, you know, two, three-minute summary, if you, if you could do that.
Sure, gladly. And so as, as everybody know, we have, we have followed the downtown parking strategic management plan for the last two years. It was, it was a result of a two thousand seventeen or two thousand sixteen study was adopted by council in two thousand and seventeen. And since the downtown parking advisory committee that's composed out of business owners, residents and other like ex-official members like the DBBA, Diamond Parking and others have implemented these strategies. We are now, the plan calls for twenty-eight strategies that go from everything from creating a parking services division to build more parking all the way at the end. We are now at about sixteen strategies that have been implemented. This summer we go to about nineteen, so we're making our way through that. That plan is a data-driven plan, which means we, all these strategies when we implement them should build on each other when they're really needed. And they're, they're really intended to mitigate and to mitigate challenges, parking challenges and manage parking demand. Also, as you know, we, one good example for that is the old Bend Parking Benefit District that we're running a pilot program right now that launched in January. And I think that is a good example of how we can implement parking districts that are beneficial for two neighbors. And while also learning what's actually good and what's actually working and be willing to be that open to say, this is what we're going to go for to try. And there might be some adjustments on the way so that we can, especially as we're focusing more on equity, how and make that an equitable approach to everybody across the board, right? And so I think that's where we're in right now. But I think what we can learn from that, whatever direction we're going in parking is that there are tools that we can deploy if you're running out of space or if you need to manage certain areas.
Great. Hey Toby, and really appreciate all your work on that as well. So with that, kind of wrapping up the staff presentation, I guess I'll get to the punchline. The staff's recommendation is really, we, we've implemented a lot of changes to our parking, to our parking codes in various parts of town. And just based on the, the ambitious set of goals that we have currently, there, there's a capacity issue that we're bumping into. And so I think what I've seen from even just the conversations where, where these are just hypothetical conversations, the amount of, of comment and emotion that comes along with, with parking, it's a pretty intense process for us to dive into. And so in consideration of things like, you know, we're, we're taking on housing and unhoused issues, which is a lot of code work, a lot of property management, a lot of plan amendment, a lot of higher level staff working on it, equity mapping, facilities planning, strategic energy management plan, a tree code, which is going to be a really deep dive as well. Resiliency planning, core area, seat, you have a ridge, and economic opportunities analysis, housing needs analysis, hundred ninety million dollar geo bonds. And you could continue to project in the per tree analogy. There's just a lot going on. And so if we're going to take this on, I just want to make sure that we resource it appropriately or we scope it appropriately. But again, with just the, I think some pretty progressive moves we've made in terms of parking adjustments, it might be worth our while to wait and see what happens with, with the core area parking, see what happens with two thousand and one. And perhaps take on a larger dive into parking in, in another biennium. But that, that is staff's recommendation. If we want to continue to pursue it, let's think about the resources that are needed and how to scope it and size it accordingly. So with that, throw it back to the, to the subcommittee, I'm going to stop sharing. Maybe this is the one actual, look at that, I was able to figure that part of technology out today. So with that, that's the recommendation, but, but obviously want to get the feedback from, from the subcommittee. And, and, and inform the plan from that. So with that said, what comments do you have? What questions? What concerns?
I'll start. So, yeah, this, this is a good recap of the conversation or the presentation we got at the work session. And I continue to feel this is an urgent policy need. I continue to feel that we need to move forward on it. I'm really interested to hear, when you say like, let's scope it correctly, what are some options? Where could we start? And I think, I think it's good to highlight in HB two thousand and one work, which is going to be coming through us, you know, this year in the summer. We've made a start there, but you know, especially for residential, I guess that's where my, my biggest urgency is, is housing. But I will say also, I think that this parking policy reform can have an impact on climate and how we shape our city. And the longer we wait, the more of our city gets shaped with some remaining policies that in my opinion continue to prioritize space for cars that we, we shouldn't do anymore. So I guess that's where I'm at, John, is, is I, I, I hear you on the resources issue. We've set ambitious goals, we've asked you to do a lot. So I would love to hear, what are the options to start moving forward? Understanding that there are a lot of things you're working on and not everything can be dropped to work on this. But where could we start to move forward on this? And even if it's in small steps, what are the first few small steps that we can start to take?
Well, I think we've made some pretty big steps to date. And so that's, I guess that's where, where I'm coming from is in, in terms of what, what we've, what we've planned in, in the, in the Bend Central District as well as what should hit the books with two thousand and one. I think our steps that have already been taken and steps that will be taken that will address that very residential area need that you, and, and concern that you have. You know, I, I think we could, if, if we don't want to sit back and see how those things play out and, and how that works for the residential zones moving forward, you know, we, we could look at some, some other ideas, maybe looking at specific geographic areas, specific zoning districts and those types of things. And, and taking some zones that are meant to be more urban in nature or areas that are meant to be more urban in nature and focusing there. I'm just, just in my role as a chief operating officer, looking at the folks that are involved in this conversation and the names that are here, they're also working on all those very large other policy ambitions that we're tackling. And I just, I want to set expectations correctly. If we're, if we're diving into parking and we're diving into it, into a tree preservation code, it's just very resource-intensive, it's very time-intensive, and it requires a pretty significant public conversation. And so I'd, I'd, I'd like to sequence things so that we're successful with both. Taking them all on right now, to me, just does not seem as though we're going to be able to accomplish what we want to do or do it as well as we want to. And it's just funny when you, when you bring up parking, there's just a, there, everybody's an expert on parking. And so I think the second we open it up, we are going to be having a lot more feedback and a lot more conversations than, than we think we are walking. So if, if we, if, if the rest of the, the subcommittee wants to move forward with it, I think we can come back to you with some smaller scope areas. But we still need to think about the resources that go into it. And a sounding board approach, in my mind, is, is something that's probably not going to be a real effective approach here because it really is so emotional and, and just the amount of folks that are going to want to be involved in the conversation. I think we'd have to take a pretty traditional technical advisory committee role or approach or something along those lines with a pretty significant public outreach.
So John, like, how do we resource the staff? To take these like really small steps and these more like focused approaches while, though it may not be this like huge, like, this is all changed, but while we continue to make movement forward on parking, how do we resource staff in a realistic way? Knowing that they're working on like many really, really, really cool projects right now.
So I think it, it, it's dependent upon the scope of, of what we're, of what we're looking at. And I'd love to get Councilor Campbell's feedback as well. Looks like she and Juan are hanging out together, having some technical issues as well. So Juan's been good company today. But the, I think it really is dependent upon, you know, one idea we talked about was expanding the Bend Central District parking regulations to the whole TIF area. So it's a little bit bigger than BCD. That, that, that's kind of a bite-sized approach. I'd still want some time to digest it and come back and, and let you know what we're looking at resource-wise. But I don't think it's a, a quick to the Planning Commission and on to this, on to the city council in any of these items. It, it's going to require reaching out to the neighborhood associations, reaching out to the various committees and having those, those conversations and sequencing it appropriately. So that, that would be my response. I think it depends on how big of an area are we talking?
So I guess, sorry, go ahead, Rita.
Well, and I think it's just as we like are having this conversation, it sounds like there are many, I know that with councils pretty aggressive, I don't want to use the word aggressive, with our ambitious and like fruitful goals to provide for this entire community. And we know that city staff are working really, really hard on many different things. And so how do we continue movement forward? And maybe have, maybe have an impact that we're looking towards. Maybe it's not something that we're going to see tomorrow, but we're like, oh, and then we're going to have this conversation and then this conversation and then we're going to see the impact. So have it on a timeline that we're kind of, as this current council can track in some way. I guess, I don't think that's a detailed answer in any way, shape or form, but something that we're able to kind of maybe see in the purview. Yeah, go ahead, Melanie.
No, Russ has his hand up, so let's let Russ talk.
Yeah, well, good afternoon, everybody, because Councilor Keebler, because I'd like to dive into kind of your, your questions a little bit more. Because for us, just so you know, there are, there's not that many projects that have come through that have not moved through because of parking. And you, and we're having some aggressive, you know, as John pointed out, we've got some pretty aggressive parking standards in a lot of areas. There are certain projects though, that where we do see issues in the, and kind of they're in that core area. And Colin can elaborate more than I can, but especially on the small lot. So there's, you know, trying to, as we talked about at the work session, there's some, those are just like those specific targeted areas instead of trying to go big. I think with the House Bill two thousand and one, you're going to capture, and you're more, you know, there's a big policy discussion you can have as that comes through of where you want to set those parking standards with all the work that Pauline has done with that group and their recommendations. For us, I'm just trying to make, I just want to make sure that there, we're trying to tackle the right question or, you know, trying to answer the right question because we are having success of getting a lot of projects out of the ground where, you know, developers are kind of right sizing their developments already within our parking standards. So I want to make sure we're not missing something big from, from your vision around this topic of, are you hearing of certain projects that are, that are not moving forward? Or are you just trying to get more aggressive with more units within, you know, trying to recapture more units under existing projects?
Right, I think that is, is part of what I'm thinking about and that we need more housing types, not just more housing, but more housing types. We need smaller units, smaller prices. And I, I don't want any, I, I want to eliminate barriers to that. And I, I think parking minimums are a barrier. So, but, but that's, I mean, this is the type of information I was hoping to have in this meeting is, what have you seen that would be a good place to start the targeting? Is it a geographic area? Is it a certain, certain kind of a zone? Is it starting in the core, like expanding out from where the core is? You know, that's, that's kind of what I was hoping to hear. And I agree with Rita about keeping this sequenced in a way that it, it's not going to happen overnight, but we are thinking about it and continuing to work forward on it. As we're tackling all of our, our other big projects. So I mean, that's, that's, that's the feedback I'm looking for from staff is like, where are some good places to start moving the needle forward on this? Even if it's, even if it's not, we're going big citywide right now, which, you know, I understand that that's, that's not the staff recommendation.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'll turn this over to Colin and to Brian for sure, around kind of where we're seeing kind of the, because there are certain areas where, yes, we could probably turn, you know, tune the dials here and there, especially around the core area and trying to get things moving. But Colin, maybe you can give some updates on kind of what you're seeing coming through the planning office.
Sure. I think probably the biggest challenges that, that we have seen are in areas of infill development, especially where there were land divisions that took place many, many years ago, like part of the original Platts of the city. You know, some of these areas are actually within the Bend Central District. And, and I think we helped to address that by that, that blanket ten thousand dollar or ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand square foot exemption for each of the properties. Because what happens is, is if, if commercial or higher-density residential mixed-use properties get broken into small units like, like a, like a fifty by a hundred and twenty-foot lot, and then those get sold to multiple different people. It's, it's difficult to, for those to redevelop because they'll have to fit the building and all of the parking on that small lot. And so where, where do we see these smaller lots? It's in the more central part of, of the city. A good example is along the Arizona-Corrado couplet. You see all of those buildings are very narrow and long. They have difficulty parking those because not only do you have to put a parking space in or minimum number of parking spaces in, but one of those has to be an accessible parking space, which has an aisle and a place for the vehicle to park. So I think those are some really good areas. So the downtown Bend Central District, the sort of Arizona-Corrado couplet, because that's got some new, newer, or that's got some commercial zoning. But then there's the mixed-use zoning that's further to the south of that. And I believe a, a good portion of that is within the, the TIF area. But we could also look at other areas that have those similar characteristics.
And Melanie, I can give you another example of a project that tried to come through a couple of years ago. It wasn't housing, it was a hotel and, you know, kind of right next to the downtown district. And they just could not make their parking work. You know, part of it was they were trying to put twenty pounds of bone into a ten-pound bag, right? But they were doing underground parking and they're trying to find, you know, downtown parking agreements. That's where we have that twenty-five thousand dollar space for structured parking requirement, which is also a barrier to redevelopment if they want to go down that road. So those, as Colin said, that's where I think we would really try to focus, I think, would be in those type of areas. And we can bring back different scenarios around that if that's the council's desire. I know Brian's got his hand up too, probably like here is.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Keebler. I, I appreciate you narrowing the scope by using the, you know, by talking about climate. So, you know, if, I think when we first entered this discussion, I apologize, I, I wasn't there. Karen was there, Karen Swersti, she's, she did the citywide parking study and is, she's our planning parking guru. She just loves parking. I apologize, she's not here today. And, and so I think these discussions are really helpful because understanding that it's a big policy issue for you and that it's also related to climate as well. If that's true for the council, then I think what that does is it narrows the geography. Because from just my perspective, it's an opinion. And maybe it's not the only opinion on this, but you know, House Bill two thousand and one and the parking reductions that
And maybe it's not the only opinion on this, but you know, House Bill 2001 and the parking reductions there will apply broadly throughout the U G B. And so if you look at the urban form of the city, you see a, a lot of peripheral residential. And then of course, as you move to the core, you have more services. You have a greater mix of uses. You have a greater mix of density of destinations and fun things to do on foot or on bike. So, you know, cutting parking will help get housing units through how, through House Bill 2001. I think it gets you those additional housing units in those distant, more distant residential areas. And, and that is a, a significant policy change. I think that is really something that is, it's, it's a, it's a strong step in that direction. So I, I, just from my perspective, knowing how difficult it was to get even modest parking reductions associated with the U G B work, that this is another step in that direction. When you talk about climate, I think what you're talking about therefore would be reducing the equal miles traveled, shorter trip distances, less use of the automobile, which then has the climate impact that you're looking for. Which then focuses us, I think, on, in this conversation, on that core and those areas that are more central to the core of the city, which plenty of work that we've done shows that, yeah, you know, the more housing you put in those areas, the, the shorter the trips, the fewer trips and the, the better impacts on, on climate. So I think that does focus us in on opportunity areas in the core. It focuses in on the TIF area. So it's now we've narrowed, you know, from the whole city and say a distant, you know, distant malls in the north end down to the core of the city in order for you to achieve those climate goals. And I think that can help us tailor what steps would be required to advance your goals in those, in those specific areas. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you. And Scott, you had your hand up. I, I don't see it up anymore, but I don't know if you had a comment.
Yeah, yeah. I was just going to say, you know, I don't think we should, we can't just judge the, you know, success or failures of projects based on parking from what gets to the desk of the city. Cause I've worked on a lot of, a lot of properties, a lot of projects where a developer just, you know, they're, they're saying, okay, land use, what, what can I do in this? What can I do with this property? And the first thing we look at is parking. I mean, parking and building heights are the two things that, that then that defines the scope. I mean, that's, it's like gravity. I mean, you just, it, 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 it defines more of what can be built than any, anything else. And and yeah, we've seen a lot of projects go away just because if they can't, you know, we know the certain size of a unit or an average size of a unit, and we know layout parking, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to to put it on a piece of paper and see whether or not it works out. And a lot of projects just, it doesn't happen, especially, especially now with material costs going up. Projects that, you know, might've worked before, don't work now. So it's almost, I don't know, it's, again, it's also a minimum. It's, it's not a maximum. So people will, I mean, I think it was like the malls on the north side of town. They didn't have to put all that parking in. But they did. So just because they get rid of, of parking doesn't mean it's going to go away. And, and another thing I always, I've always wanted to do this because being involved in H B 2001 and some other things, the word nightmare gets thrown around all the time, the parking nightmare. And I don't know what, maybe that word means something different to different people. But I've always wanted to just have a, a big map of Bend and give them a highlighter and put where is the nightmare parking right now? And then I'll have another map and I'll, I'll locate where the unaffordable housing is located and compare the two maps. So I, I, I feel like with parking, we're, I, I think we have a lot of room to move and and yeah, I don't know why we're treating it like an endangered species. That's my sense.
Kathy.
Uh, yeah, I'm also on the H B 2001 committee and we really are being very aggressive about reducing parking and trying to, to eliminate parking minimums wherever we can, but it's a collaborative process. And so, you know, ultimately it will come to the city council to, to look at. But I think that Brian brings up a really good point in terms of looking at climate impact. And the idea of maybe expanding what we did at the central core to the whole TIF area seems like a doable chunk that would get you closer to where you want. And then, you know, as we continue to move through the H B 2001 work, you know, we, we can keep this discussion about parking in mind. And I just wanted to say from the affordable housing committee aspect, we've talked to a couple of affordable housing providers and offered to them, you know, you probably don't need to do this much parking, especially when they have a senior component and, and we've heard feedback back that they never want to underpark because they want to be good neighbors. And so just because we eliminate minimums, doesn't mean it's going to materially change some of the projects that whether it's a single family home and, and they want to keep doing two car garages, or whether it's a multi-family, a large multi-family project that's affordable, they still want to provide the parking. So I don't think we're going to see an immediate change, but I do think we will in the central core and the TIF area seems to me the one that's most ripe for implementing what your, what your goal is. So just wanted to add that to sense.
Yeah. And I got one more, one more question around this too, because a lot of the parking problems that we see are directly related to commercial businesses. Right? So you're think, think of, and I'm not, I don't, I don't know if you want to call, call it a, a actual crisis, but where we get the calls and questions are around the 10 barrels, the cruxes, you know, around O S U. And so for us too, there's those kind of, you know, Colin, I know Colin has brought this up too. It's, we can, we can cut parking requirements for commercial businesses and tie a lot of that to, you know, just outdoor eating areas and outdoor, you know, because we have a lot of outdoor areas and we have requirements, you have to park those outdoor areas. But I also want to make sure we're targeting the right thing when we do this, you know, if you're, if you're after residential housing, that might be one answer versus merchant owned price, or if it's both, we can definitely talk, I mean, we can bring kind of scenarios back for a variety of different types of development.
And I, I think Russ, with your, you know, 10 barrel issue, to me, that would probably be something where Toby steps in and helps us manage those areas better. And, and we, we have that, that incremental plan that we're putting together. Toby, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but loo- looking at parking standards in an area that's already very busy and, 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 and and quite popular. I don't think your parking standards are going to do much to, to address the issue. It's going to be more how you might manage it.
Yeah. And so I think that's a good, good point, right? So Galveston, for example, is an interesting one because of one thing that everybody in the meetings that we had last year, before we did all Ben, the neighbors and even some business owners were complaining, well, you allowed this without them providing enough parking. And so my comment back to everybody in the community meeting was, so what do you want us to do? You want us to, you're not going to go back and close somebody down, right? Because I already want some. So I think that's, that's a challenge and I'm with Russ there. But the one thing is like what, what John just said, downtown, for example, if we hit the threshold of utilization over a certain percentage frequent, which we, that's where we were before COVID-19. There are the next steps that are built in, in the plan. Now I'm going to say the very unpopular thing, right? Paid parking being one of them. How do we do that right? We need to look at that, but that's one. I think one thing maybe to point out also is like finding parking is probably more important, not more important, sorry, I rephrase. Equally important in eliminate, like targeting climate action goals. And how do we do that? Do we find innovative solutions to have park guiding systems like you see them in larger cities or in Europe where people get guided right where they need to go, right? Where it tells them, don't even turn right because it's all full right now. So I think those solutions can help with that as well.
Thank you, Toby. Councilor Campbell, are you able to comment or are you?
I think I am. Can you hear me?
Awesome.
Yep.
Um, I think I would go with the staff recommendation. I think that House Bill 2001 is, as Kathy said, that we are looking at, what did you say instead of aggressively Rita?
Ambitious.
Enthusiastically.
Ambitious and fruitful.
There you go. And, and with the parking standards in the central district, I think that, I think that's a big enough chunk for us right now. I worry about accessible parking. How, where and how are we going to make sure that we have enough accessible parking as we're using more street parking? Street parking does not bother me at all. My own neighborhood is one where there are no CCNRs. And I just think my own neighborhood is ripe for ATUs coming in or somebody deciding to put a duplex where there used to be a, a home. And I just don't think it would disturb us much at all. There's plenty of parking. But again, we've already got those changes coming forward in 2001 for the community to kind of wrap their heads around. I do think the next step, the next good step is looking at the whole TIF area and expanding the parking from the central district to the higher TIF area.
You need to mute that or turn it seriously down.
And, um, so TIF, yeah, because, um, I think in the TIF area, we also have that goal of incentivizing development in addition to climate and housing, you know, right now we have, that property has been ripe for redevelopment for a lot of years. And we keep kind of poking at the edges, trying to get the right equation that's going to mean somebody finally puts some apartments there. So in closing, accessible spaces, how are we going to make sure we have our accessible spaces? Staff recommendation plus moving forward, stepping forward to changes in the whole TIF area. Thank you.
Melanie, I think your hand was up next.
Yeah, I just want to be mindful. I think we set a public comment period for this meeting. So I think we're bumping up on that. And I just want to kind of give my final recommendation and, and thank you to all the staff for your comments and, and, and the members of our committees here. I'm, I'm going to sum up kind of my policy goal here is that I don't want someone who's looking at developing mixed use housing, commercial and bend to start their process by saying, where is the parking going to be? I want us to develop in a different way from that. And that's the ultimate long-term goal, I think, that we're pushing towards here. But in the short term, I think what I would love to hear from staff are some options for some of these geographic areas. And I, I'm leaning towards, let's look at geographic, both commercial and residential around the urban core, around, like as Brian said, what's going to make a climate impact, but what's also going to help with housing in those areas. That sounds like a good place to start looking at where we can make changes or expand out the changes that we did do in the B C D and start to get that core ripe and ready and for the better kind of development. It's not car centric. So I think that's where I'm leaning at the point, at this point. But again, thank you everybody for your input.
Councilor Schenker, and then we'll move on to public comment.
Yeah, um, just kind of as we listen to everyone's feedback, I think, yeah, the barrier to housing not being built because there isn't a place to park with our housing scarcity being so high is like one of my like major concerns. And just, that's why I think I feel really motivated around the parking is how do we really get as, as much housing and creating that housing density? So that people get to stay in Bend, because what we're seeing is people who work here and provide for Bend are having to leave because there's nowhere for them to live. And in addition to this, and I know we talked about this in briefly in the work session, whatever, a few months ago, is that it is a federal requirement for us to have accessible parking. And so I think like a conversation around how do we continue to have accessible parking spots as we're decreasing the parking? And I, I know that that will be very unique to each like development. And so like, I don't expect that we're going to have just like the gold standard created in then our next conversation, but just how kind of how we can navigate it and maybe how other cities have navigated it to make sure that everyone is able to access the services or access their housing and also for humans that need accessible parking and how we, how we kind of balance that.
And, and Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically the accessible parking and there's a couple of architects or two, is really more a function of the building code. So I think if we were to remove parking minimums, we're still required to provide accessible parking based on the, the, the formula in the building codes.
If, if we don't have a parking requirement, if there's no parking required accessibility, in theory doesn't apply. It's when we start requiring spaces, then the building code says, if you have one space or 200 spaces, you need X amount of accessible spaces. However, that's the direction the council wants to go. And if there is an interest in getting accessible parking in, I'm pretty sure there's a way that we, we can work with planning and building to say, the theoretical count would be put, then put in X amount of, you know, accessible spaces, which I think would be, as Colin was alluding to, that'd be a lot more, that would be a lot easier to manage. We would just have to figure out the right process to do that and where that code would lie, but it seems like there'd be a pathway to it.
Kathy, if you have a quick comment, we can take it and then let's, let's.
About accessible parking, a lot of cities do allow parallel parking with an unloading zone on an adjacent sidewalk. So that you could have legally acceptable parking on street. It doesn't always have to be off street if the city is willing to go in that direction.
So we will come back to council with a, with a scope project for, for keeping this probably focusing on the TIF area. Focusing on accessible spaces private in, in alignment with, with climate policies, but also we're going to scope it according, we, we might need to pull one thing off the goals to put this thing on it just based on the, the, the resources that are, that are needed. So let us, let us look at the, the resources and the timing and we'll come back to council with, with proposal. But again, I'm just trying to set expectations. This is going to be pretty, pretty intensive regardless of, of the size. And we just need to be, we just need to be realistic about what we're walking. So with that, we move into the public comment section and everybody has a, I think I see two, one member of the public. I don't know if there's.
It doesn't look like there's anybody, John.
Sorry, Kayla.
We don't have any attendees.
No, okay. So with that, the one other item that would be a, a housekeeping item, again, I apologize for the technical difficulties upfront. Kayla, I'll probably want to work with you and members of the subcommittee to try to get a standing meeting every other month, not at Friday at three o'clock. Would probably be best. So, so council members of the subcommittee look, look for probably a doodle poll and we'll just try to establish it. So the next meeting would be in August, et cetera, et cetera. If we need to help hold a special meeting in between, we might need to scramble, but the, the best thing to do is to get this on everybody's calendars. Part advance, I think two hours is probably a good amount of time just based on the, the meeting subjects that we're talking about. So keep an eye out for that. And unless any members of the subcommittee have any last burning items to raise.
Nope, just thanks. And I acknowledge and recognize the tension between our goals and staff resources. And please, you need to tell, tell us this bumps this, this makes us not be able, let us know that and then we can make decisions. So I appreciate that information.
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to know that so that if there is something that's getting bumped, like we need to be able to make that decision as a subcommittee or as the council as a whole.
So we will bring back some options and, and kind of cafeteria style, figure out what, what, what the pressing priorities and adjust from there. So.
Yeah. And super thankful for all of the information and all of the work you all have done and having a meeting at three o'clock on a Friday afternoon.
Likewise. Thanks folks. At 4:57 we'll call it a day. Everybody have a good weekend and appreciate everybody's input.